Star City Broadcasting presents the 2019 Lafayette City Council Debate in partnership with the League of Women Voters, WBAA Radio, The Journal and Courier, NBC 16, and The Patriot 104.3 FM. Taking the stage tonight will be the candidates for Lafayette's council districts 2, 4, and 6. Facing off for the next hour uninterrupted.
Good evening. I'm Chris Marisi-Vizza, the moderator for this evening's forum involving the Lafayette City Council candidates in districts 2, 4, and 6. Thank you for tuning in and taking this opportunity to get to know the candidates so you can cast an informed ballot in the municipal election. In our first segment, we will be hearing from the candidates in the Lafayette City Council District 2 race. We have incumbent Democrat Ron Campbell and Republican challenger Mary Fisher. Thanks to both of them for joining us. Now, the candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement, and we'll begin with Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Chris. I'm Ron Campbell, and I want to thank you all for coming to this meeting. We hope it's informative. It's set up by the League of Women Voters, and we have a number of Jeff students, I noticed, that came in here. Somebody's getting extra credit, I think, but we'll hope that that's what they've got. And I'm going to just take a few minutes to tell you about myself. I hate to talk about myself, but I'm going to do it anyhow. I'm a graduate of Purdue University. I graduated about 25 or 30 years ago. I got a master's degree there and some hours additional to that master's degree. And I have specialized at that point in social studies. After graduation from Purdue, I was the assistant principal at Jeff High School, the assistant principal at Tecumseh Junior High School, and a counselor there. And it was great enjoyment, and I met some very nice young people, although I met some people that were kind of bad at being assistant principal. But for the most part, they were good people. Another thing about the experience that I've had, after graduation from Purdue, I taught for four years at Klondike Middle School and High School. After that, I joined the staff at Tecumseh, taught there for 12 years, and then moved over here to Jeff. I'm still thinking about Tecumseh. The main part of my experience is the fact that I've been at both schools. I gotta get to talk some more. Good. Not too short on words. I've been here in the junior high school, and it's nice to come back and visit and see some friendly faces.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for that answer. And now, Mrs. Fisher.
Hi. My name's Mary Fisher. I'm a lifelong resident of Tippecanoe County. I graduated from Purdue University as well. I have three kids, ages 12, 14, and almost 18. I'm a teacher of special education here at a local school. Some of our pastimes are, I am on the steering committee for the Feast of the Hunter's Moon. I'm also a board member of the Tippecanoe Ancient Pfeif and Drum Corps. I am a past director of the Voyager Ancient Pfeif and Drum Corps. My family has been long-rooted into this community. My grandfather and great-grandfather served as sheriff of Tippecanoe County. It's time for change in Lafayette as we face the challenges we have. I'm ready to bring new vigor and a healthy exchange for ideas for the Lafayette City Council. I feel that I can represent the families and support their needs and concerns. Family is very important to me. It's increasingly difficult to raise children in this society. Our values, our family values, spending time together. We enjoy cooking together, camping, hiking, spending time at Lake Freeman. It doesn't matter how many activities we have going on, we always eat dinner together. I also value the rich history we have in our community. We have a very unique history in this town and unique structures that go with that. Preserving those qualities is important to me, and I feel important to the community. We have great challenges and great opportunities. With your vote, I can help meet them and make this great community even better.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. And there was a coin toss before we started broadcasting, and Mr. Campbell will be responding first. We will ask each candidate the same question. They will have one minute to respond, and then 30 seconds for rebuttal time. The first question is, what is your highest single priority for your district in the next four years? And how would you accomplish it?
Being a teacher and an educator, it's important, the concept that we deal with in these opioids. We are having a terrific problem everywhere we look. The opioids are taking over young people's lives. We have no real cure at the present time. We have very few beds devoted to the cure of people with opioid problems, and most of them are young. There are none that I've seen that are adult in age. So, most of them are young, so I go to the school and say that that may be the best way to treat them, is they maybe have to be confined, but along with that, we have to show some counseling to those people. We have to have counselors that are available. We have to have education that is available to them so that they can break this terrible, terrible habit of opioids.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mrs. Fisher, what is your highest single priority for your district in the next four years, and how would you accomplish it?
I agree with Ron. Safety in our community regarding crime and opioids is a huge concern in this community. I feel that the city should support all efforts to reduce crime and opioid usage.
All right. And Mr. Campbell, you have 30 seconds to follow up with any additional information.
Well, I think we're both on the same track about the treatment of young people with opioids. They need some help. We've got to provide that help through nursing, counseling, teaching, education. We have to put our best foot forward and try to help those young people.
And Mrs. Fisher, 30 seconds.
Again, the support the community needs to give to the centers that help with opioids and additional crime that is involved around that and other things is important.
All right. Thank you. The second question will pose first to Mrs. Fisher, and that is, Mayor Rosworsky has laid out his priorities for spending the new public safety income tax revenue, his priorities being building a new police station and training center. Do your priorities align with that? And if not, what are your priorities?
I have visited the training center, and I've spent time in that center with the youth of the community. I do feel that maybe some improvements to the center might be important, but maybe we could spend some of that money elsewhere to improve other facets of the police force in Lafayette.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, Mayor Rosworsky has laid out his priorities for spending the new public safety income tax revenue, that being focusing on building a new police headquarters and training center. Do your priorities align with the mayor's? And if not, how would you propose to spend that tax money?
They definitely align with the mayor. I think that we need a new jail. We're going to need a new police station. We are breaking out of the seams, so to speak, down in the police station. They are sharing a headquarters now with a larger staff, and I think we're going to have to satisfy their needs by building more, and that's a big order. It's going to mean the expenditure of money, and that money's going to have to come from somewhere. And we're going to have to look at our budget very hard so that we can come up with those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mrs. Fisher, you have 30 seconds.
The taxes were recently increased for this budget to provide more safety for the community. I feel that adding more troops possibly would be a better expenditure than adding or improving on our existing structures.
And Mr. Campbell, is there anything you wish to add on that question?
Well, I think that we're going to have to provide help, not only in a way of material things, structures, but we're going to have to provide help in a way of counselors. We've got to have some counselors that are going to work with the young people who have this addiction. At this point, I think that's the only answer we have in a way of addictions.
If I may follow up with Mrs. Fisher, what other areas would you spend some of that money in, if not police?
Well, it was my understanding that the tax increase was for improving safety in the community, so I feel that the money should go towards the police force. I would think that adding more cars and police to the force would be a more effective way.
And Mr. Campbell, how do you balance that spending on police and fire?
Well, I think we're going to need both more police and more fire department personnel. And obviously, they're going to have to have a place to live and operate out of, so we're going to need some more structures that way. But I think that we need more counselors dealing with the young people. I'm saying they're young. There may be some older ones, but for the most part, they're young that I know of. And we have to have some people, counselors, that'll deal with those people.
Thank you. Now, these questions were developed by a partnership between the League of Women Voters, WBAA Radio, The Journal and Courier, and Star City News, as well as area high school students. And so, I'd like to introduce Aubrey Ritchie. She is a senior from Jefferson High School, and she's going to ask the next question that the students have developed.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Campbell, with more attention nationwide concerning school safety, what do you think should be done at the local level to make sure our schools are safe?
Well, I think we're seeing a great deal of that with our schools. I think there's an example right here at Jefferson High School, in which they have more security personnel and a tighter grip on the students, so to speak. And judging from your smile, that's true, that's happening right now. But I think that that is important, that we keep track of those young people, see that they're in school. You can't learn outside of the schoolhouse.
And Ms. Fisher, with more attention nationwide concerning school safety, what do you think should be done on the local level to make sure our schools are safe?
I think that the Tippecanoe School Corporation has made improvements just this year with adding a third resource officer. I also think that it was a great idea to personalize the vehicles for those school resource officers. We have a McCutcheon vehicle and a Harrison vehicle. Also with that, adding more safety measures within the school, locks for the doors, and drills that the kids run through in the worst-case scenarios.
And Mr. Campbell, you're up.
Well, she agrees mostly with what I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you, Aubrey, for that question. Next, we'll go to the overall direction of the city. Lafayette Mayor Tony Rosworsky is taking the city in a direction, and the question for you is, do you agree with that direction, or what changes need to be made in what's happening in Lafayette?
I agree with him 100 percent. I think he is providing new sidewalks, high roads, a great deal of infrastructure is going up. We're building a new park, and we're going to see new water slide, new swimming pools. There's great things happening for our city, and they are all authored by the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mrs. Fisher, do you fully support that the direction that Mayor Rosworsky is taking the city of Lafayette? What changes do you think need to be made in what's happening in the city?
Well, I appreciate the infrastructures that Mayor Rosworsky has been improving. Speaking with the residents of Lafayette, main concerns are closed roads, the length of time that those roads are closed. If there's some way that we can shorten that length of time to make businesses not suffer from lack of access to those businesses, and the safety of the sidewalks on Main Street alone are not easily accessible to those of varying disabilities that I have spoken to. They have difficulty getting up on the ramps that are on the sidewalks currently, and I don't see any improvements happening with those right now.
Thank you very much. We're out of time for rebuttal on that question. Mrs. Fisher, I'm going to ask you to go first with your 30-second closing statement.
Sure. I'm your typical minivan mom who is running for Lafayette City Council. I bring a fresh perspective and voice to the citizens of this community. As a mom and a teacher, my focus is on the issues that impact the quality of life in greater Lafayette and our youth. A vote for me is a vote for a fresh perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, your closing statement.
Well, I think the mayor has done a marvelous job with what he's doing. We see some reductions in money that's being expended for things within the city. There's some savings going on, so it's a tough thing to do to make these two ends meet, but I think that we're seeing that happening with Mayor Rosworsky and the present city council.
All right. Thank you both. These are the candidates for Lafayette City Council District 2. We're going to take a quick break and change out and have our next segment. We'll be hearing from the candidates for Lafayette City Council District 4. And good evening. Thank you for staying with us here from Lafayette Jefferson High School, where we're hearing from the candidates for Lafayette City Council. In this segment, we'll be hearing from the candidates in Lafayette City Council District 4, Democratic incumbent Lauren Ayers Meyer and Republican challenger Oscar A. Alvarez. And Mrs. Ayers Meyer will go first with her opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. All of you to educate people in democracy and to be the version of our. Margaret Mead once said that "I personally measure success in the terms as a contributions individuals make to her fellow human beings." And not only do I agree with her, but I think there's no higher honor than to serve others. Service has always been key in my life. After graduating from Jefferson High School, I worked my way through college and graduated from Purdue University with a degree in education, and I chose a career in public service. I chose to be an educator. Throughout my journey to today, service has always been a constant for me. I have volunteered in many different capacities, as it is my firm belief that we are all uniquely gifted in a manner that makes us able to make the world a better place. I've been both humbled and honored to serve the people of Lafayette. I'm proud to have been a part of initiatives that have allowed people to have clean water, safe streets, effective trash removal, parks to play in, job opportunities, stronger infrastructure, and just the day-to-day necessities of life. It's been a privilege beyond measure. Serving District 4 is also a particular honor for me because I grew up in District 4. Along the way, I made some great friendships with many of its people. I've watched it grow and change, and I've chosen to raise my family there as well. As a woman and a mother of three, I offer to the people of District 4 and to Lafayette a unique perspective and voice. The challenges I face daily are the same as many other mothers and families in Lafayette. Your concerns are my concerns, and as your representative, your voice is my voice, and I'm proud to serve the people of District 4.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayers Meyer. Mr. Alvarez, your opening statement.
Hello, and thank you for inviting us here, the League of Women Voters. My name is Oscar Alvarez. I left Chicago to come to Lafayette, start a new life, got married to my beautiful wife. I have three kids. I work at Purdue. I've been there for 14 years. Every day, I look at Lafayette and I say, what's going on? Why is there no representatives out there talking to the people? Why is nobody out there in neighborhoods? Concerned parents are talking to me, always calling me or emailing me and asking me, why is there nobody out here talking to us? They are concerned. They're angry and scared because there's too much crime going on. I'm here to serve you. I'm here to be the voice for you. I'm here to show up at your doorsteps and ask you, what do you need? What are your concerns? I'm a proud father. My kids will go to faith school right now. I'm also a Christian. Also, I'm dedicated to the people because I'm out there constantly. I'm out there wanting to serve you. I'm out there wanting to be the voice for you, and that's what I want to bring to everybody. Fresh face, I'm hungry, I'm dedicated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. The first question will go to Mrs. Ayers Meyer. What is your single highest priority for your district, and how would you accomplish that during the next four years?
When you speak to the people of District 4, we're very unique in that we do have a lot of residential area, and so, of course, usually, the number-one concern is public health and safety, and I'm proud to be a part of that committee for the city. And we do many initiatives with the police and fire departments, especially proactive policing, to help ensure public safety for the residents. Another concern those district constituents have is, of course, recreational opportunities for their children. There's a lot to compete with in this day and age when raising a family, so we try to make sure we keep the parks updated and sidewalks safe for kids to enjoy bicycle riding and family time together.
Thank you. This is Ayers Meyer. And Mr. Alvarez, this same question. What is your single highest priority in your district, and how would you accomplish it in the next four years?
My single priority is building, unifying people and building better communities in certain areas. It is a diverse district, and I understand that. So, I want to be the one to be there when they need, when there are issues that people don't get answers for, when they're always emailing their representative, or they don't know the representative, as I've seen at every neighborhood that I've been to, they don't know the representative. So, I want to be the face for them. And crime and the opioid crisis should be one of the first issues that we tackle.
This is Ayers Meyer's 30-seconds rebuttal.
I think the public safety is, of course, paramount when you're talking about district and the city in general. I think we're working very hard as a team to make sure that we're ensuring things are in place for our residents to feel safe and report, and they do quite well with next-door neighborhood applications for communicating, and of course, everything being publicly available for contact with city representatives.
Thank you. And Mr. Alvarez, 30-seconds rebuttal. And if you can include in there, how would you develop some of these communities, these groups that you feel are lacking?
We need more communication with officers. They're doing a great job, but the people have lost certain trust with officers, and we need to build that bond again, and we need to go out there and create fundraisers and such to get to know each other and talk to each other and open a line of communication with people.
Thank you. This next question goes first to Mr. Alvarez. Mayor Rosworsky is proposing that that money would first go to a new police station and training center, as well as adding officers. Do your priorities align with that, or how would you propose to spend that new tax money?
I agree with the mayor. He's done a great job. Police do need a new station. They need more officers in streets to work with the issues that are going on. I do believe that what the mayor has done, he has a good vision for Lafayette, and yes, we do need a bigger, better police station.
Mrs. Ayers Meyer, the mayor has laid out his priorities, the top two being for that new public safety income tax revenue, structures for the police department. You know, do your priorities, do you share that perspective, align with that? And if not, where would you rather see that money spent?
I do agree with that perspective, and I think many of our citizens do as well. I think one of the most exciting components of the income tax plan is that the unification of 911 services throughout the county. And as we continue to grow and become more mobile, that seems to be ever more important so that we can communicate clearly when there is an emergency. But we focus a lot on policing, for sure, but the fire department is very integral in this increase. There are many, many facets that the fire department competes in or works for, and we have a nationally-ranked fire department. And that equipment that the firefighters and police officers use is very, very expensive, but it's not just about their safety for that equipment, but also the rescue operations they perform require this expensive equipment. So, I think that will be a great investment for the funding.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez, 30 seconds for rebuttal.
I also agree with the increasing funds for the fire department. They do a great job in the city of Lafayette. Some of the fire departments are lacking equipment that they really need for the community, so I do agree with that.
And Mrs. Ayers Meyer?
I'm sorry?
30 seconds for rebuttal. That's okay.
I thought you asked me something else. Yes, I think if we...
Yes, I think if we were at the last council meeting, the fire chief did a great job representing the fire department, but I think what sometimes citizens don't realize is that to do all of those special trainings and use all that equip -- or special rescues, it takes special training, and training is expensive and time-consuming as well, and it would be nice to keep that locally in new facilities that allow them to be the best of the best, like we see today.
Thanks to both of you. And now, we're going to hear from Jefferson High School senior Aubrey Ritchie, and some of the questions have been developed by area high school students. And Aubrey?
Thank you. Mrs. Aylers Meyer, with more attention nationwide concerning school safety, what do you think should be done at the local level to make our schools safer?
Well, this is a question near and dear to my heart, since I am a teacher, but I think safety, of course, is paramount, but safety begins before an incident happens, and you start that by supporting teachers to develop relationships with the students. When students feel safe and comfortable and happy in their learning environment, they're more invested in what they're doing, and you see a decrease in crime or behavior incidents. So, I think as a community, we can support teachers in those efforts. We do offer students opportunities for safety drills. We offer students for those things in case of a worst-case scenario, but I think it's really important to bring that focus into a proactive state so that we're building relationships and foundations in the community within the school, so students and families feel supported and have safe places to turn in the event of a crisis or an unfortunate situation, and lift them up from the beginning.
Thank you. And Mr. Alvarez, with more attention nationwide concerning school safety, what do you think should be done at the local level to make our schools safer?
School safety is a big issue. I really take fond of that. I also believe it starts at home, family values, teaching family values and structures with the kids, so that way, they understand what to do when they're in school and something happens, an emergency. The teachers also need to communicate with the students, so they know when something happens, and they know where to go, where to hide, and also, I do believe that we -- Jeff, as a high school, has a lot of police officers already, and that is a good thing for the safety. It brings more comfort to the students and the teachers, and also, providing more safety training for them would also be a great idea.
Would you like to follow up and say something?
I think that having support in a building is definitely important. We do offer resource officers for our students, and I think it's important to acknowledge that those resource officers are not only there should something happen, but they're very good at building relationships with students as well, and ensuring a safe environment for all. But I also do, again, feel that the relationships building from the beginning makes a very important impact on whether or not students feel they need to take matters into their own hands in a school environment.
And would you like to follow up, Mr. Alvarez?
I also believe in what she said, building the relationships. Definitely, we need that. It is the biggest building block and structure for schools and the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our third question will go next to Mr. Alvarez. Do you fully support the direction that Mayor Tony Rosicky is taking the city in, or do things need to be changed? What things would you change in what's happening with the city?
I do support Mayor Rosicky, especially his economic development that he's had, he's done for Lafayette. It's been -- Lafayette has become an economic booming town, it is an economic hub. For many people are moving in, its population is growing, and many businesses are coming into Lafayette, and it's become a beautiful economic area for people to live in, and as long as we keep focusing on issues like providing safety and providing more diversity in economics.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. And Mrs. Aylers Meyer, do you fully support the direction that Lafayette Mayor Tony Rosicky is taking the city in, or what changes need to be made to what's happening in the city?
I'm very proud of the city, and I'm very proud of the leadership that has helped make it what it is today. It's really been an honor to be a part of the team that has provided so many opportunities economically, recreationally, educationally, to a community that continually is nationally-ranked for the opportunities that it provides. I think we're a very forward-seeking community. We're always looking ahead to what the needs of the citizens are, what they're possibly needing support in, and I think that the direction that we're heading is one that works well for many families and many citizens, and the opportunities that present to them are so readily available that it can really help bring their quality of life to such a wonderful place.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez, do you fully support the direction that Mayor Tony Rosicky is taking the city in? What changes should be made?
Yes, I do support, and at this time, he's done a great job for Lafayette. He's a good mayor, and he's brought this economic structure that has built Lafayette and brought so many businesses into Lafayette. So, yes, I do agree.
And 30 seconds to follow up.
I think we have one of the finest mayors around. He's very honest, he's very caring, and you'll be hard-pressed to find anybody who loves the city more than Mayor Rosicky. And whenever we do have to meet with him or talk with an issue, or talk about an issue or constituents, we meet together at council. He's always so very well-informed, and he makes sure that any decision he makes on behalf of the city, he educates the council or the board of works into his reasonings behind that decision. He's very transparent, which allows us also to do the same. So, when we do make decisions that affect the community, we feel very well-informed and very well-supported, so I am very glad for the team, the partnership we have.
All right, and we're at time for closing statements. Mr. Alvarez, 30 seconds to conclude.
I want to be the voice for the people. I want to be out there talking to the people, building bridges and building relationships. I want to be the one, so when you have a problem, a concern, I want to be the person you talk to. I want to be there to figure out the issues and make a better, safer community, and that's what I want to be. I want to be your vote.
Thank you. And Mrs. Aylers Meyer?
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody, first of all, for coming this evening. This is a very important step in making sure our elections are fair and balanced, so I appreciate your support. But serving on city council has been a very big privilege for me, and it's only strengthened my love for Lafayette. I'm very proud of this city and honored to have been a part of the team that continually works together to help our city be a nationally-recognized city of achievements. So, I'm proud of the diversity this community supports, and I'm proud of the varied opportunities for personal growth, and I'd like to continue to work for you, so thank you.
Thanks to both candidates. We'll take another quick break here and switch out candidates. We'll hear next from the candidates in Lafayette City Council District Four. And we are now going to hear from the candidates for Lafayette City Council. Republican challenger Perry J. Barbie and Democratic incumbent Bob Downing. And Mr. Downing will go first with his opening statement.
Thank you. I am Bob Downing. When I started my career in education, I also became a high school coach. The teams that had the most success were not the ones with a star player, rather, a group of individuals who cared for each other and were united by common goals. I have seen the same result in my 12 years of serving as city councilman for District Six, and this is why I'm here. My purpose is to advocate for the positive growth and safety of our community. I have done this and will continue by building partnerships with the city leaders, community members, and neighborhoods, while maintaining the city's fiscal responsibility. Most importantly, always listening to the people, following up and following through with the issues. The actions I take reflect that pivotal belief, "There is nothing more powerful than a community built from respect for each other and people working together for common goals." As proof of in my time, I've been able to work well with community leaders and city officials to have positive results. Our accomplishments have been transforming Glen Acres Apartment Complex to Chatham Square, improving the drainage issues in Orchard Heights, the various repairs, installations of streets, sidewalks, and streetlights, and continuing to bring new businesses to our area with good-paying jobs. I'm here because Lafayette has given me so much. I built a life with my wife, Mary Beth, and raised five young men. Well, maybe not so young anymore. I listen, I care, I follow through. I am here to continue strengthening our neighborhoods and advocating for the safety of our community while having a fiscal, responsible city government. I will appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. And Mr. Barbie, your opening statement.
Good afternoon. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Star City, and most of all, yet, everybody inviting us into your live rooms tonight. I'm Perry Barbie, and I'm running for year as city councilmember for District Six. I've been resident of Lafayette all my adult life. I love it here in this community. We needed to do better, better than -- I think we're doing a great job with great new jobs and everything in our great community, but I want to be your next city councilmember. There's a little bit -- I only missed six days in my working career, and I will bring that hard work to your city council. Most of your city councils, I cannot guarantee you too much things, but two things I can guarantee you. I will never, ever void on a pay raise for any elected official, ever. And I will only run for two terms if I'm lucky to serve. That's it. I'm going -- that's it on my opening statement, and if we can start on the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Mr. Downing, what is your highest single priority in your district during the next four years, and how will you accomplish it?
What I always believed in is people knowing people. And in District Six, we have several nice neighborhoods, and I think one of the most important things is to get people to the idea of safety in the community, and the safety in the community comes from a lot of things. One of the things that I've done is we have some neighborhood associations, not associations, but just people gathering together, and I think it's important that we continue the safety thing, especially the way some things have been going lately, but in continuing to build our neighborhoods so we do not have, what do you want to call, a situation with a bunch of rentals and nobody's taking care of properties. I believe in ordinance enforcement very strongly, and trying to keep the people knowledgeable of the areas, of the schools, safety. That's been my big thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barbie, what is your single highest priority for your district in the next four years, and how will you accomplish it?
Safety, and make sure -- safety is number one, because we -- and look out for each other, look out for your neighbors, look out for the children. When you're at night, make sure they have lights on, make sure everything is safe for the kids and for their adults. Make sure that you're not speeding where the elderly is at. Slow down. I tell the people, "Drive too fast," and I say, "Please, just slow down, there's children." And that's my main thing, and make sure, someone mentioned the Neighborhood Watch thing that you can put on your app or your phone. Great, great tool. Don't cost anybody a dime, and you can see what's going on everywhere, and that's taking care of your neighbors, too.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie. And Mr. Downing, 30 seconds rebuttal?
I think in the neighborhoods, it is important to keep a strong relationship working with the neighborhoods, but also, the issues that show up. And like I said, we fix the drainage issues on Orchard Heights. We've done a lot of things out there that have helped the community, and we've got a great new school in Glen Acres in our area now, and I think that's really going to help the area pick up.
Mr. Barbie, 30 seconds.
We -- safety, and make sure you communicate with the neighbors and everyone, and make that they know who you are, and you know who they are. It's like in my -- I know, everybody knows each other, and that's how we want the whole district. You want to know everybody, first and last name, basically.
Thank you. Mr. Downing, you were talking about things going on in the community, and I'd like to hear more about the types of things that you would like to address, and you talked about having more contact with neighbors and neighborhoods.
And you'd like to know?
How would you communicate those things? And?
What I have done and have been doing is, we try to have a group, and you try to get some leaders in the neighborhoods, and you want the leaders in the neighborhoods to get together, get people together, so people know people. And I think it's very, very important that the police, they do a great job patrolling, they do a great job being there, animal control people. We've got a nice system set up right now, and it's working very, very well. And I think the most important thing we can do is, we need to be sure, as a councilperson, that you communicate with the people. And when there's a problem, they can call you, you're readily, ready, available to be there and help them out, and that's what I think I would be able to do very well.
Thank you. Mr. Barbie, how would you communicate with your constituents, and how would you be sure to address their concerns?
Address their concerns in a quick manner, as quick as you can, so they know that you're on their side, and get there in person with them, communicate in person, face-to-face, and address it as, like I said, as soon as possible, as many as a -- talk to the police, the fire, and the citizens, and make sure they know the -- resolve it as quick as possible.
Thank you. 30 seconds to follow up.
I would say also, I think it's very important that we work very hard with our parents and the children, and like I said, we've got Glen Acres School in that district, and it's very, very important that we start looking at this, I hate to bring it up, but vaping situation with our young kids and everything, and so I think communications with the parents and people in general, to work towards trying to have the education of the kids so that we can have a better situation as they grow up, and so we don't get into that opioid thing.
Thank you. And Mr. Barbie, 30 seconds to add more comments.
We've got to stop all the drugs, not just one particular drug, there's drugs all over, and we've got to stop it, nip it in the bud before it gets way out of hand. We've got to make sure we -- one thing, people are not going to like this, next thing. We've got to make sure we bring religion back in schools. I think that's where our problem is. We've got to get religion back where it needs to be.
Thank you. And this question now directs first to Mr. Barbie. Do you fully support the direction? the direction that Mayor Tony Rosworsky is taking the city in, or what changes do you feel need to be made in what's happening in Lafayette?
I think the mayor's doing a great job. We can't argue, but what he's doing, it's doing great. We bring him a new job team, and everybody likes that. Just keep him happy. Can't say too much negative on that.
All right. Thank you.
It's a good thing though.
Mr. Downing, do you fully support the direction that Lafayette Mayor Tony Rosworsky is taking the city in, or what changes would you make in what's happening in Lafayette?
I think what Cindy Murray, our city clerk, Tony Rosworsky, they're a great team. They put a lot of things together, and we have a great Board of Works that do a real nice job with the finances and so forth. And I think it's very, very important that we all learn from Tony, in that, pardon me, Mayor Rosworsky, we all learn from him that transparency, we're very, very transparent. As a city councilman, I also have transparency. And I think it's very important that what Tony's done, we have a $500.5 million rainy day fund. When Mayor Rosworsky took over, it was only $11,000. So, there's a lot of great things going on here, the jobs that are coming in. It's just fantastic, with the leadership that he has provided to us.
Thank you. And Mr. Barbee, 30 seconds to add any comments.
No, I don't.
Mr. Downing?
No.
Okay. All right. Next, we are going to hear from Lafayette Jefferson High School senior Aubrey Ritchie, and she has a question that the students and faculty have developed here.
Thank you. Mr. Downing, if you received a $1 million grant to use for the city any way you wanted, what would you do with it, and why?
A $1 million grant?
Yes, sir.
It's pretty good. I would try to work using it, as mentioned earlier, in the program. We have to do some things about doing, taking care of the opioids situation. Education is the best way, and I think Mr. Campbell said it earlier, counseling. And we have to have a place for our people to go to and have resources. And then, there's another one. I would use a little bit of it and try to work on the homeless situation. And we have a lot of people hungry. And I think those are probably the top priorities I would consider trying to improve.
Thank you. If you received a $1 million grant to use for the city any way you wanted, what would you do with it, and why?
Education for the kids, for the drug problem, like Bob said. Homeless, we got that. So, homeless, we have a big problem in the homeless, right here in Lafayette. Most people don't realize that, but it's bigger than what we realize. And you got to fix that, and fix it into crime. Fix it into a pool. And make sure that money don't, after you spend it, make sure it don't disappear.
Thank you.
And you did a great job on that, too, by the way.
Thank you. Mr. Downing, do you have a follow-up?
No, I would just say that I think with that kind of money, it needs to be wisely spent. And what better way to spend it than on our people, and the people of our community? And that's where it should go, to help them with their problems.
And Mr. Barbee, do you have a follow-up?
The people is what we, what we're here for, to serve the people. We're not here for anything else. We're here for the people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. And we are close to wrapping up, so we will have 30-second closing statements. First, Mr. Barbee.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It was a great honor to be here. I'd like to wish my friends, Mary, Jerry, Todd, and Oscar the best for them on their election. And I hope you can remember me on Election Day. Hope I can have your support and your vote. Thank you, and God bless Lafayette.
Thank you, Mr. Barbee. And Mr. Downing, your closing statement.
I want to say also, thank you to the League for this evening. On November 5th, you vote to shape the leadership of Lafayette. For the past 12 years, I've been proud to represent the people of District 6 by listening to the community, working with city leaders, building neighborhood connections, while having a solid fiscal city government. I am Bob Downing. I'm asking for your vote and help to continue serving Lafayette. I care, I listen, and I have follow-through. Thank you.
Thanks to all the candidates who have appeared tonight, answered questions, hopefully to give you a better idea of what you need to do when you go to cast your ballot. I'm Chris Marisi-Vizza. Thank you for watching.